Good evening, everybody. I see a few seats scattered in and about here. So for those of you guys who are in the back there standing up, you can probably come up. There's three or four up here and a couple over here. Or just stand however you like. I noticed Lars was in the audience tonight, and I hope we haven't overfilled the room according to fire standards. It scares me a little bit, actually. Okay, thank you very much for coming. Really, I can see there's a lot of interest in this topic, and that's really a good thing, I think, for the future of the island. This will be our second town hall meeting from TLA in as many weeks. So just to check that we're all in alignment here, this town hall meeting is really to discuss the Urban Land Institute report and recommendations, not the assessment vote for 2014 through...16 through 18. Okay, for those of you who don't know, I'm Randy Stole, president of the Landings Association this year. My job is tonight to welcome you, which I hopefully already did. Give you a little bit of background on how we got here tonight. And then introduce John Walsh, the chairperson for the expert panel from the Urban Land Institute, who visited us in June to provide a summary of their report on their findings. And then Sherri Haldeman will talk a little bit about next steps and sort of initial impressions on the importance of some of these recommendations through the eyes of her, of the association, the club, and the company. And then we'll have time for Qs and As in the end. So that's the schedule for tonight. So for me, just a little bit of background, about two years ago, there were what I'll call simultaneous initiatives that were underway. One was called, as you remember, Vision 2020. And the other one was the beginnings of the development of the long-term TLA strategic planning process that we were going through. Both of them had common elements relative to community real estate development and renovation. Vision 2020 was a joint effort between the Landings Association, the club, and the company to coordinate and communicate development efforts taken on by the three entities. Frankly, it was one of the major catalysts to the TLA thinking about how we insert that into our long-term strategy, and it was important initial work. In the last couple of months, TLA, TLC, and TL Co. have agreed to transition Vision 2020 and the work of Vision 2020 into the TLA Development Committee with representation from TLA, the club, and the company, as well as local experts, resident experts, in various areas of development. Sherri, Stephen, and Raul are all permanent members of that committee. We have what I would call rechartered the committee to try to get a sharper focus on future potential development and refurbishment of real estate on the island. And again, I'd personally like to give special thanks to those who really started up the Vision 2020 process and really got us thinking about important things we should be thinking about for the future of the island and keeping us sort of what I'll call relevant for the future in the eyes of us today, keeping it as great as it is today, and for future residents who may want to come here. The ULI study was driven by several things. A strategic planning process by TLA, and the five important strategic objectives we had, environmental sustainability, housing amenities, governance, and technology are all touched on in the report in one way or another. Needs expressed importantly by the club and the company, as well as, and even more importantly, And it became pretty obvious to us that in order to get this process going, we had to do some sort of a land use study and eventually do a land use development plan or a master plan. And we felt like we needed some outside expertise to do that. And so we asked ULI, and I'll tell you a little bit about Urban Land Institute in a second, to come in and visit our community and provide us with what we'll call a fresh, independent, and objective assessment of development opportunities on the island. And we provided them with 10 basic questions for them to start wrapping their minds around and answering for us. Those questions, I think, were given to the residents in June of this year and are published in the report, which again, I'll talk about in just a second, so you can go back and review those questions. A little bit about the Urban Land Institute. I wasn't quite sure how to describe exactly what it was, so Sherri was kind enough to send me the mission statement, which I think does a good job of explaining what the Urban Land Institute is. And I'll just read it off, it's on the screen now. "The Urban Land Institute provides leadership in responsible use of land and in creating and sustaining thriving communities worldwide. ULI is an independent global non-for-profit organization supported by members representing the entire spectrum of real estate development and land use disciplines." I do know it's international in scope. It has over 35,000 members. And I know from my days back in Old Glendale, Ohio, that it's a pretty important organization as it relates to community development, urban development activities. So even I'd heard about it before I got here. And Sherri has been very familiar with it back in her days as a city manager in Ohio. So a good, top, great, top-notch organization, and we were lucky to have them come here. A little chronology about the sort of how we went through the study, just so you know. We, I think, contracted with them back in April of this year, late March, April of this year. And one of the first things we did was we provided them with a very extensive background document of the island and all the entities on the island. Not only the association, the club, and the company, but also the State Park, the Oceanographic Institute, the village, county stuff that goes on on the island, and so on, as well as information on the city of Savannah and the county of Chatham. So they got a very complete background document before they even got started. Then ULI developed a six-person panel that was led by John Walsh, who I'll introduce in a second here. And they digested all that information before they came here. And they visited us the first weekend, June, for the entire week, starting Monday, June 1st through Friday, the 5th. And I think we had a town hall meeting to introduce them on the 1st, which I think some people were confused about what that was all about, but it was about introducing the entire panel. Starting from that minute on, they were busy every second, all the way until about 4:00 on Friday afternoon. They did interviews with somewhere between 75 and 100 people. Not only people that, again, were landings residents who have been involved in the landings development somehow or other, board members, GMs from the three major entities on the island, the Lewis family was interviewed, people from Oceanographic Institute, State Park, everything. These people were all interviewed by the ULI panel. They also toured the island, and they spent about three-quarters of the day running around the island. Gary Hughes was one of the hosts for the club. So they were on, was it our bus or the club's bus? I can't remember. But they saw everything from the sewage treatment plant to the golf courses and clubhouse. They spent then the next two and a half days going through all the information that they'd had, the interview data download and tour, and started to formulate their points-of-viewer recommendations for us. And then on Friday, in the afternoon, they provided us with preliminary recommendations. And then finally, we got the finalized report in September. It took a while because of vacations and whatnot to get it finalized, but it was done in September. On Friday, you should all have received an email notice from TLA with a link on it that provided you access to the full report as we received it. It is on www.landings.com. And Carl, what else do they need to know, or is it right on the front page? Follow the link in the email. Carl says, "If you need the email, call the association, we'll send it back to you." And then importantly, we're setting up a feedback link for comments, questions, concerns, just really meant to be a dialogue, the beginning of our dialogue with you on this particular issue. And so you send your questions to uli@landings.org, and that'll get the questions to us, and we're going to do our best to answer them for you if we can, or give you perspective if we can't answer them specifically. Couple of housekeeping things before I introduce John. One, you'll notice we have a videographer back here. I have full-face makeup on tonight, so I look good in the video. He's here because, for a couple of reasons. One, just in case you guys want to revisit this whole thing tomorrow morning or tonight when you go home, not quite, maybe tomorrow morning or the next day when it's put up in a link, you can, if you want to kind of go back and say, "I don't remember what they said," you can go back to it. And of course, for people who are not here, this is not, this comment's not going to help them, but they can go on the link and take a look at the whole process. So we just thought it was important enough that we sort of memorialize it. Also, on your seats are note cards and a pen. If you didn't notice it, stand up now and turn around and look, because it's underneath your seat. These note cards are for you to jot down any questions that you might have. If you need more note cards, we'll get them to you, because there may be a lot of questions. And then when you're done, pass them to either end of the aisle. They'll be collected throughout the meeting or towards the end of the meeting before Qs and As, right? And then we're going to try to answer those questions as best we can tonight. And those that we can't, we'll get back to you. So please put your name, and if you have an email address or a phone number, stick it on the bottom, and we'll get back to you with answers. And before I turn it over to John, I just wanted to remind everyone something very important, and these are what we got up here as caveats, but I just, it's something that I think we really need to keep in mind. And that is that these, the things that you're going to hear from John are recommendations and ideas for us to think about as we plan for the future. They're not mandates, they're not stuff that we absolutely have to do, but they are things that we should be thinking about, because these folks were outside experts looking at us from the outside in. Now, if you're like me, and I'm pretty sure some of you might be, you're going to find some things, or already have found some things in the report, that you like a lot. And there are going to be some things that you're sort of ambivalent about or maybe neutral about, and there are going to be some things that you don't like very much. Just know that this is the beginning of a process and a conversation with the community about future possibilities for development on the island and renewal and renovation, you know, of current housing stock. So please keep an open mind. We're looking forward to really good questions tonight, and hopefully we'll be able to answer them. And I'm sure we're going to learn a lot from what you all have to say as well. With that, next slide. I'm going to introduce John Walsh as he walks up here. John was the chair of our ULI panel. He's a native of Dallas, Texas. He's the president and founder of TIG Real Estate Services. He's got over 30 years' experience in real estate development and management. He also is an active member, has been an active member of ULI, both as chair and members of several panels, as visited us in June. And he teaches at the university level a number of business law courses and development courses. He's been a member of the Texas Bar since 1978. He's probably a Cowboys fan.
Not this Sunday.
So please join me in giving John a warm welcome back to the landings.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the attendance. It's a big room, and it's full of people. A lot of times, we do these reviews, and there are a dozen or two dozen people in the room. I have to put some things in context. Of course, this community is filled with golf courses, and when we were here in June, Tiger Woods had not made many cuts this year. And a guy named Jordan Spieth, that only won one major, he happens to be from Dallas, by the way. We're kind of proud of him there, and very proud of the way he came back from not making two cuts. Let me also put it in context that what ULI tries to do, I've chaired 12 of these panels. And I can tell you that the ones that we did over 10 years ago, many of the things have been thrown out, and some of the things have actually been adopted, but a lot of really exciting things have happened in communities that I've been able to participate on panels for. Because it promoted, it created an opportunity and a catalyst for folks to begin to look at their community not related to the past, but related to the future. And that's one of the things that I've enjoyed about ULI, is that we tend to look to the future as much as we look to the past. And we use the past for lessons learned, to try to establish better practices. But we have to look at the future and the changes that have occurred. And to face this coming world is something that none of us are probably prepared to do without doing research, without looking at the facts that are around us. And that's what our panel did. The lady and gentleman on our panel were all volunteers. None of us were compensated for being here. We looked at this community as a very, very important task for us, an opportunity, but an important challenge. And we faced some challenges, just as you will continue to face challenges. We tried to grab hold of those, seek to understand those, and then deliver a result that you could use for the next 10, 15, 20, maybe even longer years. So don't look at it as, "Oh, gosh, we've got a year to get all these things started and in place." It's encouraging to know that you have pulled together the three leaders of your entities and the three, and brought together within those groups, leaders from those groups, to begin to look at this as a three-legged stool, making the decisions, moving forward to make this a great, a greater community in the future than it already is, which we were all very impressed, by the way. Felt very accustomed at the end of our week to a place that certainly is a wonderful place to live and play. Our panel was made up of people from all over the country, San Francisco, and Southern California, Texas. We had a little bit of weight toward Texas, and North Carolina. But I think that each of us brought not just our own personal experiences and our own communities, but our collective experiences in our work around the country and around the world. To summarize, and this is pretty broad, it's not too specific, but to summarize, the panel's primary recommendation, and we'll see it at the end as well, is that the landings should be repositioned as a multi-generational, engaged community. This goal means the resident of the future should be offered a multitude of social and community amenities in addition to the current focus on golf. We think golf's great, and certainly we should see a resurgence with the coverage that we've had in the last year and with the tournament that's coming up week after next. But it's important that we recognize that demographics of our country and our communities in this country are changing, and we'll see the facts that support. We didn't rely on the concept that Tiger wasn't doing well and Jordan hadn't emerged yet. We relied on the concept that things are better understood in the context of real demographics and real trends in population and desires of that population. So we tried to understand those market trends. We tried not to set new strategic objectives, but to take what had already been done in the Vision 2020 exercise and to weigh those, to recognize those, and to some extent, try to help those be more realistic and to be more achievable. Branding, Skidaway has a brand. We felt like that the brand is a great brand. At the same time, we looked at the branding, and we had some ideas on that. And again, they're not the answers, but they are questions that need to be answered with some alternative answers that we came up with. One of the questions that we were posed with was, "What do you do with the existing housing, and how do you improve that, and how do you increase the values of real estate on the island?" We were asked to look at the master plan and look at opportunities to develop, so we did that. We considered a variety of approaches to physical amenities. It is no, there is no question that the amenity-driven residential communities in this nation are thriving and doing extremely well in many communities around the country. Desert, waterfront, forested, wherever they are, it seems to be a trend that we will have for the near term at least, and probably for a longer term. Our children, and there are probably some of those in here in this room, we have many children and grandchildren who we diagnosed when they were young as ADD, and they're just, they just like things to keep going. They like activity, they like to always be doing something. And that's not true for every single human being, but it seems to be the trend today for many of the upcoming adults in this country. You have great mobility here for those that have golf carts, but you're not connected to the rest of Savannah. So we looked at mobility, we looked at connectivity. We tried to identify places where people could get together, not just clubhouse, but places, not just places that are in the built environment, but also part of the natural environment. We looked at certain specific sites, we'll see those at the end of my presentation, they're in the, they're in the report, you can see them in more detail, you can study them. Those were first shot architects, engineers, developers, and demographers trying to think, "What can't we do? What's an exciting thing that we could do?" None of its, none of its final drawings. It's still going to require a master planning process to really come up with a deliverable as opposed to an excitable. The areas that we looked at, we know, and I've learned more even since June about sewage treatment, because I'm involved in the purchase for a charitable organization of a property in Colorado. And water rights in Colorado are extremely difficult to understand, especially the water rights with regard to used water. But I learned a lot since then, and I can tell you that we were right on. It wasn't my expertise, it was really the expertise of those that we interviewed. We're right on, but there is potentially some developable land that right now is being used for a purpose, but maybe a higher, better use. And then one of the, one of the things that I was talking to some of the folks before we started, is to move the welcome center outside the gates. And we found a spot outside the gates where you pretty much come on the island, and then you get to go into the welcome center and learn about the island and the opportunities to own real estate and become club members and all the things that are here, but not necessarily things that should be learned after you're in the gate, but could be learned before you're inside the gate. So that's generally what we, what we came up with. I'm like number, the last one on the page, as I said, I'm thrilled that that step's already underway, probably not finalized, but certainly underway. This is an interesting slide, and this is where we started working on demographics. These are national demographics, and you can see what the baby boom looked like, and you can see what has come behind it. And it would be exciting if we knew that Gen X, Gen Y, and the millennials all were going to end up the same as the baby boomers in the way they live out their lives, especially the latter years of their lives. Our team really doesn't believe that you can take the past and overlay it to the future, even though the numbers look similar, we just don't see it happening that way. The shared economies concept that millennials have, Uber, didn't exist when the baby boomers were retiring, or actually when we were working. The schools were public, and we'll see a lot of this as we go through this presentation. Things change. So the numbers look good until you look at how the population goes. And I think it was Greg who, at the presentation, said, "You're running out of time if all you want to do is pick up the last wave of the baby boomers. You've got five years, because the baby boomers are going to start shrinking." We have the inevitable facing us, and it is an inevitable. So if you look at these, when you go through the presentation, you'll see in detail how we looked at these. These are some of the comparisons we made, the 1950 to 1980 household. We had a marginal tax rate of 71% versus 35%. You can read these, low historical immigration. We now have high immigration rates. The baby boomers were entering the workforce, now we're leaving the workforce. And let me just tell you, the millennials, I'm not sure they're in a hurry to enter the workforce. I have a, I have a 25-year-old that he decided to walk across America instead of getting a job. And then he came home, and I said, "Well, how's the job hunt going?" He said, "I'm having a hard time deciding what I really want to do." And he's a sharp, smart, educated young man, but thinking about shaving that beard and cutting his hair a little shorter, it's just not in his brain yet. The good news for me is, I don't pay any of his bills anymore. The bad news for me is, he could live under a bridge and it'd be just fine. And I think there's a lot of that going on with millennials. And so where, where do we go? That's the 20 years out for you guys to ponder. What are you going to do with those millennials? I suggest you build a bunch more bridges and get a bunch more cardboard. In the 1960s to 80s, we had, we really did have growing real household income, and we really did have a fluid middle class. Now, I'm not sure if I believe the political side that says we have no middle class anymore, but it's certainly not the competitive comparative effort to grow my own family economy like it was. The demographics have shown that, that we relied on. The labor participation of women was 12%, today it's 65%. These are all just things that we had to rely on as panelists in what we did. Dual income versus single income homes. The qualifying for a mortgage. And then public versus private school. So these are all things that we pondered and said, "If we're not able to point those out to you, we're relying, we're not giving you the tools that you need to go and ponder the future." The good news is, we recognized real quickly, you guys weren't alone. These are competitive subgroups, and you can see the price erosion they had following 2007. By the way, everybody on the panel suffered seriously between 2007 and 2009, because we were all in real estate. And whether we were consultants, or whether we were developers, or whether we were investors, we all suffered because we all had value reductions that made for big cuts. But you can see that you're not alone. We studied, and Greg did this, and you guys are just going to have to study this, if you've got questions, you give them to Sherri, and Sherri and I'll get Greg to tell you how he came up with this. But his concept was is that the size of the future second home pre-retirement market is a shrinking market, and it's a more competitive market. There are more choices now, it's not just coastal island communities, there are communities that, in the desert, in the mountains, there are communities in Dallas, Texas, in whatever we are. We're not desert or mountain or forest. But there are these communities where life... But there are these communities where lifestyle for pre-retirement and retirees has become part of the development context and has created a competitive situation that probably did not exist 15, 18, 20 years ago in the way that it does today. One of the things we looked at was, was this discretionary residential community. People choose where they want to live. People choose where they want to stay. And things have changed in that area as well. Our lives are more complex. Is anyone here that would say your life is simpler today than it was five years ago? If you're in the same station of life? We've got one. Mine's not. You know, I love some of the terms they use. Time-constrained, dual-income, sandwich generation, active kids, merged marriages, extended families. One of the things we looked at is that a number of the people we interviewed were in their second marriage or didn't ever want to get married again. They're finished. Whether they were, whether widow-widowers or whether they were divorced. So we have a lot more single households today than we ever have. And those are single households, many of those that want to own a home. So the demographic is a little different than probably your demographic today if you really take it to its, its logical future. And a lot of people are starting second careers. That 2007 didn't just affect real estate prices. It affected retirement plans. It affected people's liquid income. It affected their ability to actually retire. And even those that were contemplating retirement, some are just not able at this time. And so they're looking at second careers or secondary income to help them with their retirement and government subsidies. And then again, this competition is not only greater today than it was, but it's a growing greater. So we looked at the trends in discretionary recommended residential communities and their flexibility to provide amenity programs, and not only amenities, but programming to go with those amenities. And when we talk about programming at ULI, we talk about parks in urban areas, not just being parks and green space and, and water features, splash pools. We talk about programming. One of the, one of the award-winning parks in Dallas yesterday had 25,000 people watching the Pope on a big screen, actually participating in the mass that was conducted in Philadelphia. It was programmed. The day before that, they had on Sunday, yeah, Monday, on Saturday, they had a big event there for kids with face painting booths and just activities. Every weekend, that park has something programmed. It's not just a park. Well, you have extra dollars with that. You have extra effort with that. You have more volunteers to conduct those kinds of programs in your public spaces. But we're seeing that as, 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 as happening all over the country. We're seeing it happen in small towns, in small cities, in large towns, in small communities. And so that is one of the things that we know has changed. It's not the same as we just went out. And for the guys, we just went out to the park. We threw down four bases. We played scrub baseball until it got dark. We don't do that anymore. If we go on a bike ride anymore, it's a planned bike ride. It's not just I'm going to ride my bike. For kids and adults as well. And then our homes are different. How many of you looked at the homes today versus the homes of the 1960s and 80s? There's no, there's no differentiation between the kitchen and the family area. And often there's even a game area beyond that. There's more attachment to the outside. We don't have casement or double, double-throw windows. We have big old windows and big connections to the outside. And out here, you've been doing that. So you're ahead of the game on that, but the rest of the world is catching up and actually bringing the outside in. And we'll continue to do that. And again, making it a more competitive playing field. Okay, when we looked at these areas, we just looked at the, at the obvious. There are some not obvious, but we looked at the obvious. And in Deer Creek, there we found some lots that were developable. We recommended on this, single-family lots. In some areas, we recommended other kinds of lots. This is the welcome center location. You want to go look at the report, you can look at this same plan. But you can see it's, it's before you get to the gate. The community gardens and cottages, we, we really felt like with the changing demographic that, that this communal, this not communal, community approach of creating space that is, that is surrounded by living quarters, that allowed people to communicate on their porches. They're closer together. It's a tighter knit. And there's a lot of that desire for that urban feel in less urban locations, again, throughout the country. We're, we're seeing that, and people are actually paying more for an attached home. In some cases, they are for an unattached, quite a bit more. We looked at open spaces. We looked at, again, other potential development areas, including the spray fields. So maybe you can't recover 100% of the spray fields. Maybe you can. Technology is becoming better and better in that area. And there also, when we talked to the county, we did talk to Chatham County in addition to the others that, that you heard about. And their indication was you guys are a very well-liked community. And if you ask for something, there's some likelihood that you'll be heard and maybe even honored in that, that request. Know it's expensive, but at the same time, if we are successful in what we've given you and you take it and run with it, property values may support that. We looked at adding another village area. One of the things, some of the room are, are happy with it and some aren't, is the fact there aren't very many places to eat on this island unless you're a member of a club. And not everyone's going to be a member of the club. And that, I think that's a given that we accepted. I hope that the folks in this room understand that was the, the fact that we worked with. So having a little bit of office space for those that still want to work, but still want to play golf a lot, that want to live in a beautiful area, but not go too far, not have to drive all the way to Savannah for an office space. We looked at adding a common green area, which again, could be an area that could be public gathering space that could be programmed. And a lot of communities have, have created these green areas, these common greens, and begun to program those with all kinds of activities for adults, children, and everyone in between. Then we looked at a different concept. This is a concept too for the same area, focusing a little bit more on density and five-story multi-family. Again, we're not trying to tell you that's what you should do. What we're trying to say is, conceptually, there's a lot of choices out there. And with the right group leading it and the right consultants supporting it, you could come up with things. This may be the, the, the granddaddy of what we came up with. And I, I don't know if it can be done. I know there are hurdles. There are, there are coastal environment hurdles. There are government hurdles. But we felt like that the amenity on-site that has the biggest gain for the dollar would be the, to improve the marina next to the state park, to extend the road through the state park. And we talked to people that, that seemed to think it was a good idea that could be done, even those that would normally stand in the way, and said, "That's not a bad idea." What it does, it gives you access to the marina without going through any gates. It allows access to the marina for those that are inside the gates. It allows the marina to become a centerpiece that can be accessed by water or by land. And we're proposing a pretty magnificent restaurant grill concept that would be an attraction, that would be an attraction to the entire region, not just to those that are familiar with or spend time at Skidaway. We think that it would be actually people on the intercoastal canal may even, even find it to be a destination place as they enjoy their boating. Open space ideas, you know, not all of them cost a fortune. Disc golf, by the way, for those of you that don't know disc golf, you can play nine holes in about 45 minutes. It's pretty hard on your body if you're not in shape. I played recently and my children really embarrassed me and I hurt the next morning. Chuck wagon night in the park. Again, you don't have to do a whole lot except plan it. You have to have volunteers. You have to have a little bit of equipment. Glamping, this was a new one on me. Glamping, apparently glamorous camping. You have a lot of good spots for glamorous camping, and maybe glamping and birding can go together. Treehouse camping, obviously you have some places where treehouses would be wonderful. After last night's flood tide, maybe you'd want to have a few of these treehouse places, just, just in case. I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. And then washers, I guess washers is, you know, if you go back after the construction's finished and just pick up the scratch, you've got a game. Another concept we looked at was cottage court homes and patio homes, additional community gardens. We looked at property that was owned by the club. We looked at association property. We felt like, again, a master plan does involve all property owners on the island, at least representation for all the property owners. So we again, tried to, tried to not pick who owned it, but picked what could happen on it. So to wrap up, the goal of the panel has been to provide the landings with the tools, not the answers, to reposition itself as a multi-generational engaged community and protect its potential to thrive as a sustainable community. Now, I'm going to talk about sustainability for about one minute. ULI has spent a lot of time since Sandy, looking at resilience, resiliency in communities. And in parts of the country, that resiliency is drought. Parts of it, it is tornado. Parts of it, it is the rise of the sea. I am glad that I wasn't here today with a tropical storm off the coast. Wouldn't even have to be a hurricane based on, on where the moon and the earth and the sun aligned last night. Which, by the way, we had clear skies in Dallas, and it was great for those who got to, didn't get to. It was, it was, it was wonderful. It was, even, even in our overlighted community, it was visible. So one of the recommendations, and I'm not going to go into detail on it. One of the recommendations is to consider the rising sea level. No matter what's caused the rising sea level, it's, it's real. And when we have storms compiled with lunar and solar alignment, we could all, actually all be at risk in this community. So probably not, not so much that any home is at risk, but if you have parts of your community that are at risk and actually suffer the consequence of a catastrophe, it becomes real difficult for the rest of the community. And those folks in New York and New Jersey, many were not impacted, but those that were impact, had, had impact on those that were not. So thank you. We'll follow in a few minutes with questions, and I'll be back up here.
The slides that I'm going to be presenting, I view as, and I hope you do too, gentlemen, because I view them as a product of our collective perspective. And that was a really important step for us because the three of us need to work together, obviously, going forward to make these things happen. Our initial impression of the report is that ULI clearly challenged some of our thinking and advanced some ideas that we would consider broke some glass. I suspect that you might feel the same way in some of these. Some of the recommendations are also very clear priorities and are fully supported. There are others that are worthy of consideration, but that are not likely as high a priority. And there are several recommendations that we, of course, consider provocative, and those are those that broke some glass. Overall, we agree very strongly that there are many recommendations that should be further explored and pursued. The panel also addressed areas and issues, as John pointed out, that they believe are important to our future of the landings regardless of which one of the three entities is responsible for management of that given area or issue. As we sort of through the recommendations, it's clear that many require a very strong partnership and collaboration among the three entities and the community. And we are very prepared and committed to doing that going forward. Separately, some of the recommendations are solely within the purview of one of the entities, be it the association, the club, or the company. And those we would respectfully defer to one another to implement or address as they choose to be evaluated and addressed as part of their normal process. Stephen and Rollin and I categorized the recommendations into several buckets, if you will, for discussion with our respective boards to help focus the three entities on our collective areas of agreement rather than where we diverged. So the buckets we identified are, one, those that are already part of TLA's strategic plan. Two, those recommendations that we believe should be explored and pursued. And three, those that we, we believe are both controversial and may not likely be suitable for our community, at least not at this time. Some of the initiatives and directions that were contained in TLA's strategic plan, as I mentioned, were reinforced by the panel, which we, we were glad to see that in many areas we are, are on the right track. They recommended that we proceed with an update of our master plan. And we have recently executed a contract with the Ragsdale Planning and Development Group, RPDG, for this purpose. I'd like to ask Adam Ragsdale, who's sitting in the front row, just to please stand and be acknowledged. You'll, Adam is the principal of RPDG, and you'll be seeing a lot more of him and hearing a lot more about this project going forward very shortly. Some of the residential development concepts in the ULI report will be explored as part of the master planning process. And we'll be conducting town halls during the process to involve all of you in the work. The second area that they recommended that, that was also part of our strategic plan is the update and modernization of the architecture review guidelines. We've been working on that for a good portion of the year already, and some of you may well have participated in that process. ULI also stressed the need to improve technology and the connectivity infrastructure in the community. And, perfect timing, I might say. We need to improve the technology and connectivity infrastructure, emphasis added. That's also an objective in TLA's strategic plan. Some of that work is, is well underway. So we also had a number of areas of agreement about things that should be explored that I wanted to touch on. The two spray fields, one owned by the association, one owned by the, the club, are used by utility zinc for effluent disposal of the island's sanitary sewer. So in conjunction with efforts to reduce groundwater, and is anyone from ULI here tonight? Are UI, utility zinc here tonight? Okay, well, I just wanted to let you know that they are also actively reviewing alternatives for effluent disposal. It's not just focused on water and the ability to identify an alternative water source and reduce groundwater use. They are very focused on alternatives for effluent disposal. They've advised us that the spray fields have the capacity to support the island to build out, and they would have an excess of about 300,000 gallons per day after build-out, which is a very positive thing. They also believe that their research will ultimately eliminate the need for the majority of spray fields altogether. There is also currently sizable acreage that's never been developed with spray heads and will never be required for effluent disposal. So given those facts, we believe that a plan should be developed for the long, long-term plan and a short-term plan for the use of the spray fields. The second area is to evaluate the use and priority of remaining developable tracts of land in the community that fits perfectly in with the land use master plan and the work that Adam and, and the team, as well as the community, will be doing in that regard. The third area is to relocate the company offices outside the gate, and John spoke about that a little bit, and convert existing land to residential development. At present, we all recognize that the company office or the welcome center is very remote and def- At present, we all recognize that the company office or the welcome center is very remote and difficult for many of our sales guests to find. So people often don't get the benefit of coming into our community and having the full experience of everything that we have to offer. That's a huge disadvantage to our sales guests and prospects. The other part of that is that that building happens to be a nineteen seventy-three vintage. Given its age and condition, the timing of this recommendation is probably very good. So those are the three areas you agree on also. We agree that we should proceed with higher density housing options because we have a number of people who would like to find alternative housing than their current situation. And we recognize that there's a demand for people who want to downsize in our community, who want to move to our community to downsize, live a maintenance-free lifestyle, or simply want new housing. And unfortunately, we have, well, we do have some wonderful housing in our community, but not a wide range of options in terms of variety, type, and size. And the next recommendation, number five, update signage. One of the most common complaints that we have from our new residents who move here is that they have a difficult time finding their way around. You're laughing, is that, have you had a hard time finding your way around? Well, okay, well, I'm glad that we are actually already working on that and we've identified that as part. We talked about that last week at the assessment town hall, by the way. We also have chronic issues of identifying and distinguishing, or people identifying or distinguishing, between the club pass and the community pass or the association pass. And often that's a source of conflict. So this is an area we would certainly like to address, try to resolve in a very practical way that helps people also find their way around a lot better. The last item in this slide is to improve the village and retail offerings. And as John had also mentioned, the Lewis family was a part of our interview process and we've continued to have some good discussions with them as follow-up to the ULI presentation. We support the efforts to, sorry, back one more please, just a quick second. Just wanted to finish with, we do support the efforts to improve the retail offerings in the village and to work collaboratively with the Lewis's where we can, or alternatively, explore an alternative to the villages that currently exist. So, the other areas of agreement are a bit more conceptual in nature, but we agree that they have merit and that we should certainly take a look to see what they might look like and how they could be achieved. So, these include unifying our branding or messaging, marketing among the three entities, conducting market research, enhancing and leveraging the waterfront experience, developing a lifelong learning resource on the island, and establishing a unified community vision among the three entities. So, it may be understated to describe the three recommendations, Carl, if you'd pop all three, maybe understated to describe them as provocative and thought-provoking, but suffice it to say that we all realize these are hot-button issues. And they include the creation of public access to Presley Marina or Landex Harbor, as we call it, by extension of County Road. And I put county in there because the actual name of the street is Aska and that means Ocean Science Center of the Atlantic, but nobody knows that. So just in case you want that tidbit of information, that's what it is. So that's the first one, create public access to Landex Harbor Marina. There was a recommendation, John didn't go into great detail, but there was a recommendation in the written, full-written report that said, you know, think about golf course conversion to real estate. And the third was some additional restaurant inventory. So, all of those, we realized for a variety of reasons, are somewhat controversial and that they would be hot-button issues. John mentioned he didn't know the feasibility of some of these and recognized these are long-term kinds of things that may not be applicable today in these current times, but they may well sometime down the road. But these recommendations, as presented, we don't believe are suitable for consideration for our community at this particular point in time. Going forward, many of the ULI recommendations will be explored and discussed as part of our, in the context of our strategic planning process, which TLA has already held several community meetings on the strategic plan and will continue to do so as the plan evolves through your feedback. Separately, though, the recommendations on the residential development in particular will be explored as we move through the land use master plan process. And that process will include initial development of a draft plan that will be presented and discussed with the community. Your feedback will then be reflected into a final draft and the plan would ultimately, down the road, end up requiring approval from the Metropolitan Planning Commissioner, MPC. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that for virtually all residential development scenarios or specific development proposals, the governing documents of our community require that, and this is a direct quote out of our covenants, additions to the scheme of development be approved by a vote, end quote, of the community. So, what my point in saying that is to let you know that we're going to go through the master planning process and we're going to consider all of your input. And we're going to go through a process where then MPC will review it. That's probably a six-to-nine month process. We're going to ask for your involvement and your participation. Once that plan is approved, though, by the MPC and we move forward with specific development projects, we can't envision what they're going to be right now, but once we get to that point in time, it will require some form of vote. So, I want you to know that before we move on because I think it's pretty critical that you have that context for what's to come, okay? Among many things, this report from ULI clearly encourages residential development of a broader housing product as well as population growth and requires a high level of collaboration, communication, partnership, not only among the three entities but with the community as well. We view tonight really as that launch, the launch of the community conversation and that's going to require your ongoing involvement and participation. What we're going to do, we're going to move into the Q and A portion of the meeting. So if Raul, Stephen, John could come up and if the staff could collect any questions that have been collected, that would be great. We're going to go ahead and start with the questions. And the first one I've got here is, why is it important to create high-density housing-dash-lower-income question mark? Why do we want population growth? John, do you want to, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, and there's another one that's very close. How important is population growth? Have you considered the downsides of population growth? I think the panel recognizes that, first of all, you're not fully developed here. So you have, you have, under the original plan, room to add additional population. In addition, there is a trend in this, this next three generations of wanting to have more relationship connectivity, more of the kinds of things that would require the higher density. Though I think another question was, why the high density? And it's not just, it's not just the coming generations. Not everyone in this room would fall into this category, but there is a growing population piece of the baby boomers who are choosing to find more dense locations because of relationships that they can develop in those dense locations, more amenities surrounding where they live. The urban areas in this country are just succeeding incredibly where higher-rise, even large spaces inside those high-rises are being occupied by the twenty-somethings and the sixty and seventy-somethings. And it's not for everyone, but you're missing a large piece of the population. You choose to, that's this community's choice, but we recommended it because we see that as a trend around the country. Also, there was a question about lower income related to these higher-density facilities. Let me just tell you, if you want to buy a, the lowest-priced place in Austin, Texas right now, pretty much unfinished, it's a shell building, you can buy a sixteen, seventeen-hundred-square-foot condominium and it's going to be probably seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars. So, we're not talking about cheap, we're not talking about low-income housing. We're talking about housing that satisfies the needs of many that are out there today. I think I captured those two cards. All right, we'll have five stories, why not? Again, the concept was, we put two or three concepts in place to show the different things that are happening. But it seems that with the five-story, the costs of construction are less, but the values are pretty high relative to that cost of construction. And if you want to entice someone to develop, which, these are all going to be private development projects, you're going to promote the concept for your community, but a private developer is going to develop those. It's going to be something that will be considered. And again, I'll go back to what I started with. These are not set in stone, these are not final plans. These are just ideas that we tried to create the opportunity to think forward. And penthouse condo, yeah, that would have a great view from five stories, but if we're going to go penthouse, we'd go twenty stories? We were afraid to recommend that, by the way. Why do I get all of these? Where is the location of the community cottages? It would be on the area that is, my directions are probably not right, but I think north of the villages, the village, there's an area to the north of that, along the road that comes in where there's some undeveloped land across the road. And I thought there might be some if the golf club decided to do some things. We saw a couple of locations that are currently the lesser, not necessarily golf course, just near golf course, that might be areas to do that. And I don't know that, what is, is that all related to the same thing? The mixed use, yeah, that, again, that would be more toward where the village is rather than inside where we already have single-family development. Another one, does anybody else get any? Woo, this is a serious one, it was typed up. Who has a typewriter? All right, all right. The redevelopment, I haven't looked at it, so I'm just going to read it. The redevelopment initiative recommended by ULI recommends introducing incentive and financial assistance programs, possibly including homeowner or developer grants and loans designed to encourage rehabilitation and redevelopment of existing homes. And could I elaborate? In a lot of communities where we have owners of property that are no longer in the state of their economy that they were when they bought their home, don't have the money, frankly. Their provider of resources may have died, they may not be there anymore for other reasons. The income stream may have deteriorated that was used to maintain and operate the household. And as we all know, there's a vicious cycle. The paint peels, house is worth less, I don't have the money to make the paint look good, so I'm going to get less. And in a day and time where that begins, then it's rotten wood and then it's failed plumbing and it compounds. So the concept is, is that you're already doing it voluntarily. I think we recognize that a lot of work's being done for some of these homes by volunteers. We just felt like it might be a community-wide resource use that provided value to the surrounding community as well as those particular homes. That answer the question, I don't know who asked it, but I hope it answered it. The next one, in regards to retail development, to the ULI panel, ran data for a ten, twenty-minute, thirty-minute drive time centered on the middle of the island. Analysis revealed strong demand exists for restaurant space and to a lesser extent, general retail space. There were some very specific recommendations made for retail space based on this data. How was this data gathered? For example, were individuals surveyed as to their wishes? Actually, what was, I didn't do that data collection, Greg did that. But Greg did interview some people with regard to that that were probably not members of the club, for the most part. And he also used general demographic information that was available. He has a pretty in-depth retail background and does a lot of retail research and basically used the multipliers based on the number of people, the age, the demographics, the incomes. And all of that was gathered from public information. And then he extrapolated the answer based on how that public information would lay out to retail demand. Hopefully that answered that question. Again, I didn't do that research, but I did rely on Greg and I do know Greg gets paid big bucks to do that for big retail developers. We could split it up, they're probably tired of me. Let me also tell you guys, tomorrow morning at six o'clock, I'm getting on a plane and leaving. So, if you're mad at me, just let me get out of here first. I won't be back, except to play. But it is something that we took to heart. We want to leave behind the best of what we had to offer. So, my answers may or may not be what you want to hear, but they're what we felt we needed to hear. ULI near-term recommendation is create a marketing strategy, this is a different font, by the way, so I think it's a different person, for a broader target market by capturing third-party research and evaluation of additional data regarding industry trends in the market. Specifically, who and where do we go to get that research? I don't know specifically, but I do know, and you want me to read your name on that? I won't read the question maker. There are, there are throughout this country, research firms that your team is aware of, that can do the research as you choose what you need. And again, research is based on what you need. One of the things we recommended was, don't rely on just what we're saying about the demographics of the next fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years because there is ability to take and take general US or regional graphics and make them specific to skid away. And that's what we're recommending, is a specificity to it that allows you then to aim at a very, very small target instead of shooting a shotgun out there that might hit something. Am I off? Am I finished? I'm going to take a break.
You can take, you can take a quick break here. We line up some other, let's see, here's one that says, what are recommendations for existing aging housing stock? And I, you heard John mention that in his last comment, but I did want to go into the next question. Water-sewer treatment plant question mark, how much money question mark? Are you, I, and TLC on board? And before I ask Stephen to answer that, I will just say, we don't know is the answer to these. Somebody's asking a question, are you talking about a water and sewer treatment plant? I think. Utilities Inc. is looking at every option. And that does not necessarily mean a treatment plant. They're looking at aeration methods and a number of other innovative technologies. How much money? I don't know yet. That's still down the road. And are UI and TLC on board? Okay.
Let me add, we weren't asked this question, but... Yeah, that's what's happening, it's feeding through yours. We weren't asked this question, nor did we ponder an answer, but I have on other panels looked at sources of funding. The only source of funding is not just dues and fees. There are a number of federal and state programs in place in virtually every state to improve the water quality of that particular jurisdiction. And so, you've already probably paid for it, so maybe there's a chance to get some of it back from what you've paid through the last 25 or 30 years in taxes, to get some of it back for infrastructure. But I do think that's something worth exploring. Again, having the right consultant aboard to do that exploration will probably relieve you from the big cost of major infrastructure improvement. And technology is getting better on sewage treatment, so it'll probably go down in price as the technology gets used in larger arenas.
Okay. This is an interesting question. It's one that's been kicked around conceptually for a number of years. "Why not meld TLC, TLA, and the company into one unit now or soon?" Well, I'd like to welcome Sheri and Raul to the Landings Club, first of all. No, but, you know, I think folks that have explored this or looked at this recognize there are some real impediments to this, not the least of which are the voting thresholds required for us to be a bundled community. It's a big issue. A lot of bandwidth would be required to push this forward. And frankly, there are some people that believe that our community is better by focusing on building a club that people want to join, rather than mandating it. And again, we, as a club, selfishly, we would love everybody in the community to have some stake in the club and support the club in some way. But we also realize that that is a very, very difficult thing to overcome or create. And consequently, we think our focus needs to be on building the club that people want to be part of. So, I think that's our club's position for now. Sheri?
Just let me know when you're ready to join us.
Okay.
There's a question here. It says, "Will current assessments fund any of these ideas?" So, those of you who came to the Assessment Town Hall last week will know what it is being used to fund. I cannot think right now of anything but one project that's been recommended here that's included in the current assessment package. And that was the wayfinding study. The wayfinding study, not the implementation of those recommendations. Frankly, most of the projects that are presented and discussed here tonight, actually, all of them, require some study. So, there's nothing here that we could run out and do tomorrow, whether we would want to or not. So, no. Other than that, that's the only project that's envisioned in the assessment over the three-year period of time. And of course, we've already asked you to support that, sent out the proposal, so we're not planning to change it. Okay? Sure.
Good evening, everybody. A couple of questions here regarding the TELCO move to outside the gate. So, I'll try and lump them together. But both John and I believe Sheri addressed some of the points of things to be gained in that move, you know? The way I look at a lot of these suggestions, we're trying to move, you know, if this is the hill climb from zero to a 10, we're trying to take an eight and a half and take it to a nine and a half. I don't believe you ever get to a 10. And this is one of those incremental solutions. The goal would be, you know, do we move it into Smith Brothers was the question. The goal would be, if we had our druthers, we would put this on the right side as you come on the causeway and make it exactly that, our welcome center coming onto the island. We've looked at two or three different sites. Certainly, Smith Brothers isn't off the table. And we've got some assessment going on with that. And as soon as we know more, so will you. But we think we'll be well-served to have it outside the gate much more logically placed than it is now. I like to tell people that people start making that drive and they start to believe Christopher Columbus was correct. They're getting ready to fall off the planet on McCordar Road before they get there. So, we want to get that solved.
Good evening. So, I have a question. Please talk about the economics, planning costs, development costs, final outcome to current residents. The planning costs are something I'd have to leave to Sheri to discuss as far as finances are concerned, but they're, I would say, minimal as far as the consulting costs. They're soft costs for people that are in the business. As far as the development costs, the whole idea with this plan is to take land that the Landings Association Company and club already own. So, there's no cost in acquiring land. Then taking a product that we will develop, a package out to the market, so that the market absorbs the cost as far as any development is concerned. So, we develop a master plan, a concept, we go to market and say, "Mr. Developer, Mrs. Developer, we want you to consider and bid on this overall concept that we will then work with you to develop." So, essentially, it's not a cost to the community at all that I can consider. And as far as the last question, the final outcome to current residents, I don't really see, there's not a cost that I can consider that would go to the community. This is already land.
Yeah. Our development process goals would be that development, construction, all that sort of thing would be handled.
Yeah, absorbed by the developer.
Exactly. Exactly. So, there's a question that says, "There was a comment in the ULI report recommending additional cell towers. What is TLA's position on this?" TLA's position is that we need to improve our technology. We would hopefully find an ideal location, maybe during the master planning process, that isn't a problem with the neighborhood. People complain about cell service and lack of cell towers. We have, TLA has three. I believe the club has one. And, okay. And what I would say is, if anybody has a good location that will not be offensive to the immediate neighbors, please let us know, because we're looking.
Sheri, why don't we just, why don't we just put it next to the swimming pool at the roof of the 20-story penthouse condo?
Oh, I like that. Or maybe we could put it inside the building itself. Adam, you want to also touch on that?
Part of my professional life, I'm the past chairman of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. The Metropolitan Planning Commission is the body that's responsible for implementing federal guidelines with regard to cell towers. If you didn't know, just a very brief summary. Cell towers are essentially something that if a need is developed by a municipality or by a company even, we're required as a commission to essentially rubber stamp those tower locations. We really don't have the ability to say, "You can't put that here." They've got to really break the rules hard to, in order for us to have a lot to say about that. That being said, the companies are very aware that everyone loves a cellphone and everyone hates a cell tower. So, technology's getting better every day. And there is a proposed Verizon Tower already being studied for the South Island that I'm aware of. The towers also, if AT&amp;T comes in and wants to put a tower up, and the desired one right now is called a slick stick. It's just a pole, and all this stuff is inside of the pole itself. So, it's not very obtrusive, but they have to have co-location points. So, if AT&amp;T wants to put up two towers or two cells on one tower, they have to have five additional co-location points so that there aren't five more towers out here. So, the infrastructure is getting smarter and smarter and smarter. The island is in desperate need of additional cell resources, and the technology's getting better. So, hopefully, that will help everyone absorb them.
Can I just clarify one thing? I don't know what's going on at the south end of the island, but it is not on club land in terms of that tower. So, just to be clear.
I believe it's private property.
Should I take the next one? It's from one of my favorite members and residents. He makes a comment on non-member play on golf. Gates gone, public road to public restaurants, and pool at the marina. Club association competing with amenities, for amenities. Campgrounds on golf courses. He didn't use this word, but he says messing up homeowners, sort of a thing. Full integration of Savannah on an island. These are opposite of why I moved here. And by the way, did you forget the hotel and the subsidized housing? And this is a really good person, who I know is having fun with us here. Let me just address a couple of things from the club's perspective. And President Hughes, Gary Hughes here, as is many of our board members, and I hope I speak on their behalf. There are some proposals in here to convert golf course property into residential use. But one of the things we have to be cognizant of, it's not like our golf courses are empty. To the contrary, we may play more rounds of golf than any private member-owned club in the country. At capacity in this part of the world, a golf course is at about 40,000 rounds a year. Each one of our golf courses is at about 30,000. We're at a wonderful spot where we've got great access and high usage rate. So, we aren't in a position where our golf courses are empty. There are other six-course communities in the region, in the southeastern region, that play 110,000 and 120,000 rounds, or 130 rounds a year. So, we have a very good usage rate in our community. So, it's not part of the discussion. Furthermore, our value proposition is good. A lot of the things that motivates communities like ours to consider the closure of a golf course is when their cost structures are unsustainable. Our cost structure is strong, it's sustainable. Our market position, when we look at our cost to be a member of our club as a golf member versus the features, benefits, and amenities of our club and community, we are very, very strongly positioned. So, there is no external pressure or impetus to drive us to make a decision to close one of our golf courses. Furthermore, as a club, we desire to be a good community neighbor. And we recognize many of the folks in this room, whether you're a golf member or not. You may have acquired a piece of property for purposes of having a view of a golf course. And there's an implied promise there. And it's not our desire to renege on that promise. When you bought that piece of property, you expected to be looking out your window at a golf course, well-maintained and manicured, beautiful open space, not overgrown or gone to seed. So, from the club's perspective, what we really need to focus on in this report is the pro-growth, pro-development message so that we never have to have a conversation about closing a golf course. And I think that's the most important takeaway from our perspective.
John, you've got a question. Oh, Adam's got a question.
Why not have more discussion about how to improve existing home stock versus building now? And then there's another question. Why would, what does new home building do to existing home stock? Those are rhetorical questions, I assume. New home stock adds to the value of the community. It increases the value. If the value of new goes up, the value of existing goes up if it's maintained. Our concept was, fix what you have, not replace it necessarily. Replace it if it can't be fixed, grow where you can. And we weren't trying to change the values, except up. And as far as specifics with regard to how to do the, how to improve your home stock, it's a community effort. Cities that have blighted property, which you have none of that, but cities that have blighted property provide an impetus through the community. In this case, your community needs to be responsible for the least because the least impacts the best. Any discussion about a medical facility? We discussed it. We actually proposed it in one of the concepts. And we think that there ought to be a medical facility. With your population demographics, with children and adults and senior adults, medical facilities are good things, at least a quick-care facility. And what is the increase in, what is the estimated increase in community population? It's not huge, but it will increase just by nature of developing out undeveloped land. And, you know, it was an idea. It wasn't intended to be, you have to go do it. The harbor for non-member residents, it's, property owners here get to use the harbor as well. So, I think it's a matter of, can you make an amenity that improves the value of life in your community? It's all we're trying to do. Many committees have a lodging component. Why not consider for lodging? Many, many communities have a lodging component. In our interviews, we were discouraged from having a lodging component because that makes it a resort. We didn't necessarily think it was not a good idea, but it just didn't need to be in our report. We were trying to be careful on what we had in our report for your property values.
I've got a couple, a couple related. One follow-up regarding population. The existing land use plan that was developed by Sasaki in the early '70s still has about 300 units of build-out capacity left. So, you add the 300 units plus what we're going to plan on the 20-plus potential project sites. And I don't know the answer to the question. But the real answer is that, I've already met with the Planning Commission staff on how do we approach this, how do we start? And the first question that always comes that we knew would come up is, "What's your water and sewer capacity?" So, that leads to the other two questions that I have on water. And water is water, but sewer is sewer. They're two very different things. And how you can treat water, effluent water, sanitary water. And technology's come a long way. And UI is very aware of the new capabilities, new technologies that are out there in order to improve the way that water is treated and in order to develop increased density in available land use. So, make sure I'm covering this question. I don't know the answer to how many additional residential units will be created. But I do know that outside of the old sprayfield technology, there's new technologies with reuse, with what we call purple pipe or tertiary use of effluent water. It's clean to the cleanest possible point that we still don't want to drink it, but it's still very good for irrigation and those kind of things. So, different kinds of land application that are available today will make higher-density more accessible.
Does anybody have any more cards? Oh, I think I handed that to you.
My question is this. Obviously, with a lot of the plans you have here, our population would grow. How much does it have to, what makes us a town or a city or whatever? I know we aren't that now, but, you know, and what would be the ramifications if we got to, I don't know, 15,000 people and we were all of a sudden a town or whatever?
You have to help me on this one, you're a city manager. But there's a certain density of people that allows you to incorporate and become a town. And that is a vote by the people as well.
We're past the density requirement. I mean, we're, not density, the population requirement. We already exceed that, and we've not taken any action to become incorporated. Is that what the question really is? Right. So, one of the items in our strategic plan is, which is a six-year and then some plan, would be to take a look at incorporation and determine whether or not that's something that we think makes sense to pursue down the road. We did visit that question in 2003 and then again in 2004. And you know what the outcome of that was. We decided not to go that particular direction. This strategic plan says, there's a lot that has changed now, and we recognize that. And we need to take a fresh look and see if there, if anything about the pros and cons has changed. We do know that there are clear advantages, but the question really is, is it good for our community? Is it in our best interest? And is it really something that will make an important difference to us collectively? And is it really something that will make an important difference to us collectively? So, that's down the road. So, let me ask this. Was it? I guess we're done. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I don't think there's anything else that we can add, but there is a uli@landings.org for any additional comments, questions. Sorry. Thank you. And we'll either respond to them, or we'll continue to use that to seek feedback from you. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming tonight.